Good morning, everyone. Welcome to Macon Biff County Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the 10th, 2023, and the time is approximately 9:03. We'd like to welcome everyone here today. I trust everyone had a lot of sleep after watching that Georgia Bulldog victory last night. We certainly want to congratulate them and all of Georgia for their much success, and we have a lot of people from Middle Georgia on that team. We certainly want to lift them up today and hopefully they have a safe trip back to Georgia. I'm sure they're going to have a good time. So we'll begin the morning with our approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes this morning is from the December 13th, 2022 meeting, not too long ago, and at this time entertaining a motion for approval. A motion by Commissioner Wynn, will you get a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Proctor and Clark, any discussion? Hearing a discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries will be sent to consent agenda. We have a few alcohol beverage licenses and a couple of appointments today, and we're going to begin with the first alcohol beverage license, which is final approval of the alcohol beverage license for conditions at MF 786 LLC DBA Corner Grocery located at 2057 Walnut Street, and we'll hear from our counsel regarding that case.
Good morning. My name is Frank Howard, Assistant County Attorney at Macon Biff County, and just to refresh your memory, you're, this is before you today because the corner grocery, y'all voted to approve this with conditions and set off a process where the applicant had an opportunity to appeal to the decision. The applicant did not take that opportunity, and so it's back before you today to vote on the license. And so my recommendation is to approve the license with the condition you implied at your last meeting, which was that if they are ever determined by code enforcement officer to not be in compliance with food mark requirement, that their license may be revoked.
Thank you for those comments, and Commissioners, at this time entertain a motion to approve the restrictions placed at the corner store on Walnut Street. Motion by Mayor Proctor and Clark, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? Hearing a discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries will be sent to consent agenda. Item B is Haddock Properties LLC, 20's Pub located at 3076 Riverside Drive. Attorney Howard?
In that one, Commissioners, they have met all of the submission requirements to obtain an alcohol license, but I will bring to your attention Macon Biff County Code of Ordinance Section 4-363, which allows you to determine whether it is in the public interest of health, welfare, or safety to grant or deny a license, which states that any manner in which the applicant conducted an alcoholic beverage business under any prior license may be considered by the commission. There have been multiple shootings at Tim O'Gallagher's businesses, Billy's Place, and Thirsty Turtle. Those were back in 2020, and any other information you may have about the way that his businesses have been conducted in the past, you can take that into consideration to determine whether it's in the public, interest of public health, welfare, or safety to approve a license for this, for this applicant at the 20's Pub, or to approve with conditions, or to deny this license.
Thank you, Attorney Howard. Anyone have any questions for Attorney Howard this morning? Commissioner Wynn?
Yes, sir. Frank, so we can deny this because he owned, the owner of this one also owned the other two that had the issues, but has this particular location had issues with shootings and things like that?
Not to my knowledge, no.
But, but because he has the other two locations that are his, and they've had that kind of thing, we can deny because of that.
You may take that into consideration, and yes, if you determine based on the way these other businesses have been operated, that it is not in the interest of public welfare, health, or safety to grant the license, then you could choose to deny if you see so fit.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lucas?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask, on some of these locations, it looks, it seems to me that parking, I guess my question is, does the availability of parking where it doesn't take up space from other businesses close by? And I have reference to one location that's on Log Cabin, and I believe there was a fatal shooting there several years ago.
Correct.
And whenever I pass by there, if it's late, the cars are parked all along. It's the old location of where Frank Cars used to be on-
Dakarisa Moore on Log Cabin Drive.
Pardon?
Dakarisa Moore on Bloomfield and Log Cabin?
Is that the name of it? It's, it's there near the corner of Log Cabin and Murse-
Yeah, next to the car wash and the dentist's office.
Yeah, yeah, and I just noticed cars all over the, the place. Is, is there anything that we can do to monitor that situation? Because it looks like with the picture that I just saw, that there may be, could possibly be a parking problem? Is that a little shopping?
This particular area has plenty of parking. Yes, a huge area out there.
I'm talking about the inconvenience of other businesses that are there. Is there-
There are grounds under subsection seven where you can consider the suitability of the premises for the conduct of alcoholic beverage business, including its location, highway traffic problems, and the difficulty and absence of thereof of policing law enforcement agencies. There may be some grounds there to consider if that business is causing issues for greater traffic issues, if that, if that is the case. I'm not aware of any issues, any such issues for the 20's Pub.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't, it just seems like some of these places are building in some problems with neighbor businesses as far as the, the parking, because some of it is ridiculous. It's all over everywhere. So anyway, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Attorney Gruber?
Let me ask you this question, Mr. Howard. In terms of the objective criteria upon which the commission could, could deny if it so chose, based on what you know, the evidence would be based upon, that evidence would be based upon these prior shootings at these other locations owned by the same applicant, is that correct?
Those shootings could be considered, yes. Those objective, those could be the objective criteria, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes, sir. This business is currently open, right?
That's correct.
That is correct, Commissioner.
How long is this applicant own the bill, the business, and, and how are they operating now?
He claims he was, he's been a 1% owner for an extended amount of time, and no issues at that business have been brought to my attention.
Operating under the previous owner's license currently?
He is operating under a temporary alcohol license pending your final decision.
Temporary license, good.
Until, until the commission makes a final decision to approve or deny? Or approve with conditions?
Mr. Mayor, for obvious reasons, I've been out of pocket for a couple of weeks. I'd like to table this, like make a motion to table this until I can do a little investigating of my own.
Have a motion to table, an undebatable motion by Commissioner Howard, we have a second. Second by Mayor Proctor and Clark. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion is tabled. I'm done. Yeah. We'll table that item and revisit it at a later date. Going to move on to item C, which is C1-CYI Entertainment LLC Marathon located at 4915 Bloomfield Road. Attorney Howard?
I recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you for that recommendation. If you have a recommendation, they meet all the statutory and legal requirements. As far as we know, there's been any issues at this location, and they have stiffed a good standing. Can we get a motion to approve? I'll make that motion. Will you get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? Hearing a discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Thinking that motion carries will be sent to consent agenda. Item three is appointments to authorities, boards, and committees. You have a resolution appointing Joseph Hewlett on the Macon Biff County Fire Civil Service Board. Mr. Hewlett, would you please stand? Mr. Hewlett is no stranger, has been a former fire department employee for a long time. We appreciate your service there, and he comes to it through a recommendation from several members of the, the fire department, and we have two more that will be coming to you next week to fill positions on there, and then at this time I entertain a motion for approval, Mr. Hewlett. Motion by Commissioner Water, will you get a second? Second by Commissioner Bronson. I'm Mr. Lucas.
Yes, just for all of our information, could you just, someone do a brief description of the duties of the Fire Civil Service Board?
Sure, if I can ask Attorney McNeil to come forward to give you that information? And we do have a need to get the other two on there, too. There's some promotions that have to happen, and because we have some people that, their terms have expired, we, we need to go ahead and address those next week at the, next meeting as well. Attorney McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Files, Fire Civil Service Board is responsible for reviewing the process of selecting firefighter candidates for promotion, and so they, they were involved in the hiring process, but that was changed by the commission a few months ago, and so now, now just the promotion process to sergeant and lieutenant, et cetera, is, it's taken through the Fire Civil Service Board.
Okay.
How many members?
I believe it's five members on the board.
That's correct.
Is it five?
Any other questions, Ms. Lucas?
Pardon?
Any other questions?
I have some more, but I'll, I'll ask after.
No problem. We do have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries will be sent to consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Hewlett. Item B is a resolution response, reappointing Charlotte Woody. Ms. Woody is here today on the Governor Board of the Balance of the State, State and Continuing Care for Other Lawful Purposes, and she has been serving on there and has served there well, if you don't mind standing. Everybody will know who you are, and they've asked for her to be reappointed. At this time, entertain motion for approval. Motion by somebody over there, who was that? Mr. Bronson, second by Commissioner Lucas. Any discussion regarding Ms. Woody? Ms. Wynn?
Yeah, I, I just want to say she's, you know, she serves on me with the pension board, and she's very, very, very knowledgeable. She's been serving on this, this board already, and it will be good, it's going to be good to continue her on this position. But I wanted you to do what you did with me a minute ago and just explain to me what the board does and how beneficial it is, if you don't mind. Thanks, Charlotte.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for your consideration for reappointment to this board. Again, I've served on the Georgia Balance of State Board for the last few years. Currently, I'm the Assistant Director in the Economic and Community Development Department, so I work with homeless programs for not only homeless individuals, for those who are at risk of homelessness. And this board works with governing information as far as regulations and preparing other documentations for jurisdictions throughout the state of Georgia as it relates to serving homeless communities or homeless individuals and those at risk of homelessness. And having worked for the last few years, I've had a chance to work with the point in time count. I've had a chance to even review applications where different nonprofits have applied for additional funding. And so Macon Biff County, of course, is one of the 152 counties that are under the Georgia Balance of State, and we get an opportunity, of course, to learn more about opportunities for nonprofits here in Macon, as well as for people who work along with the Economic and Community Development Department through our grants.
Thank you for asking, Ms. Woody.
And, and, and the best thing about her, she's a Georgia graduate. She's got her red and black on today.
That ought to be easier than there, then. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for all that you continue to do for Macon Biff County. At this time, we do have a motion and a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries will be sent to consent agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to a appropriation item, and this is a ordinance to authorize the appropriation of up to $7.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to the Macon Biff County Affordable Housing Fund for the purposes of funding affordable housing development and blind remediation in Macon Biff County. Because the amount of money that we're talking about here, I want to go a little bit more in depth, and I'm sure several Commissioners would appreciate that. I do want to say that I have met with at least eight Commissioners on a one-on-one basis to go over information on this to make sure that all their questions were answered ahead of time, but want to tell you a little bit about this Macon Biff County Affordable Housing Fund, and I'll recognize some people there in the audience in just a moment. One important thing is the mission statements, to support the development of more affordable housing in Macon Biff County as a response to the current housing crisis that we have, and strive to prevent future affordable housing supply shortages in Middle Georgia. One of the objectives of this board is to look into lending money for an attractive interest rates for the purpose of creating new housing units in Macon Biff County. The amount that we are proposing to utilize from ARP funds, which is a specific legal use of these funds, is $7.5 million. Is the intent of this board to try to leverage or raise an additional $7.5 million for a total amount of $15 million for the project. We expect at least 200, 250 initial units to be placed on the market, whether it's new build or rehab, by allowing people to get gap financing, allowing for rehabilitation of blighted properties that we have in Macon Biff County, and also for some infilling of the properties that we've taken down approximately 425 over the last couple of years. This board is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit board, and the board itself will be filled in the future for any vacancies, 40% by the commission and 60% by the board itself. It consists of various members of our community by the positions that they hold, and I'm going to go over some of those positions with you now and ask for the board. At that time, when your name is called, to stand up as well if you're present. There are several members that could not be here this morning because they were out of town traveling or had other obligations, but we will mention their name. The first on the board is typically the mayor or his or her desert knee will serve on that board. Today, we have Dr. Dan Sims, who's the superintendent of Biff County Schools. It will be him or his desert knee that will serve on that board. Mr. Everett Werner is the chair of that board, and he's the actual director of the Macon Biff County Land Bank Authority. Mike Austin is here with us today. Thank you, Mike, for being here, Macon Housing Authority. Ms. Catherine Dennis, Community Foundation of Central Georgia, one person from the foundation will serve on this board. Mr. David Danzy from Sanovis Bank, we have one person from a financial institution that will serve on this board. Mr. Sean Stafford, Sr., which is here with us today as a construction contractor, will serve on that board as well. Mr. Alex Morrison will serve on that board, who works for our Macon Biff County, as well as Urban Development Authority. And Ms. Bethany Rogers will serve on that board. She is not here today, but she has numerous expenses with finance, and then previously was employed by, in that same capacity with Newtown, Macon. Those are the current board members that will sit on this board, and proposed applicants will come before that board, and they will review that in their executive committee and render a decision on what type of funds to use. Like I said, beginning, the purpose of this board is to leverage its funds to provide affordable housing. As we know in Macon Biff County, we are like most other communities, and we have a severe shortage of housing. We have a lot of out-of-town, out-of-state institutional investors that have come into our county and pretty much taken a lot of our affordable housing stock away, and they have increased the rent significantly, which allows for, allows for people to experience homelessness, but also requires multiple, multiple families to live in a very small space to make ends meet, which creates a lot of conflict. As you know, this directly related to crime and homelessness. So is it for that purpose that we have created this board, and it was for that purpose that I'm asking this commission to join me, and I hope it's a unanimous vote, to let the people in Macon Biff County know that we understand that we have a housing crisis. This is significant. I'll tell you how it's significant, too, and I want to put my school board hat on for just a moment. On too many occasions in our school system in Macon Biff County, we have a certain segment of our population that's traditionally your minority and poverty, historically black African-American schools that have had neighborhoods that have left, which means you have blighted houses there or empty spaces and no families living there, which, which causes the population of those schools to decrease. And when that happens, you lose your QBE funding, and you lose things like a, a assistant principal, or a counselor, or a media specialist, things that are vitally important to those kids to get the quality education that we want them to get, and to help prevent some of the crime issues we have. And you have a couple of options there. You, you can consolidate, or you can close, or you can just deal with it in other capacity by having, having it short there. One of the intent of this, this mission and objective of this board is to fill those gaps in those neighborhoods that need it the most, to lift up those neighborhoods and make them sustainable, to also keep those neighborhood schools intact. And that's one of the reasons we wanted to make sure that Dr. Sims was in there with us, and he's certainly 100% supporting this objective. So at this time, I have a Mayor Proctor and Clark, Mike, to ask a question or make a statement, and we'll move on for other discussion.
I'd just like to, one, I'd be added as a co-sponsor to this, and hope, as in the vein of Ms. Lucas, I hope everybody, I think this is important enough, I hope we'll all consider signing on to this. And I just wanted to point out what, how deep of an investment this is into affordable housing. I think a lot of times around even years, proposals like this are codified and not funded. The city of Atlanta promised an investment of $25 million of a housing trust fund during an election cycle, and that bank account has been, only $7 million has been put into that. They have a population of half a million people, and we have a significantly less or smaller population. This is a real investment, and it's going to be game-changing for the community, and I appreciate the, that this is not a nominal investment in affordable housing because it is what we as politicians are supposed to talk about at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor and Clark. Any other comments or questions from members of the commission? Commissioner Wynn?
Mr. Mayor, I know we had a one-on-one conversation about this, but remind me, this is $7.5 million, it's going to be a match of a $7.5 million. Explain that again?
The $7.5 million is the ARP, American Rescue Plan funds that we will be depositing into their account. We're going to leverage the funds with their, through foundations, through other banks and institutions, grants, et cetera, that will allow us to do that. Our goal is to do what we've done to all other American Rescue Plan funds, is to leverage those so we can double the money that we have. It's also the intent of this board, too, is to reuse this money year after year. It's why it's called a revolving loan fund. It will help keep either rents or homeownership prices low so people can afford them, and it also will allow a lot of our teachers, our firefighters, our police, our public services in the area to be able to afford homes in areas that they live and work in. So it's something I certainly side about. But this money will be used over and over again. So if someone builds a home and infills one of these places that we've torn houses down, and when they refinance that for a low interest rate, either through gap financing or through the bank, we'll get that money back immediately with interest and use that money again to keep, keep revolving that each year after year.
So the main thing is some of our money is coming from local authorities and local-
With local foundations, local grants, and local banks, that's correct.
Good.
We've had interest from several banks that want to pull their money with us. We'll be able to do that at low interest, quite honestly, with the interest rates going up now, and the price of building supplies going up now is making it very difficult for affordable housing, workforce housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucas?
Have you already done all of the enabling documents for the entity?
Yes, ma'am.
Everything's already in place?
The Secretary of State, as well as the federal FEI N number has been done, the Articles of incorporation, the minutes. We've also had meetings. We'll have another meeting coming up here soon, and legal counsel has provided all that, and we have an existing LLC that we took over for nonprofit for Macon Biff County Housing. So all the legal steps have been taken. It's our hope to, to meet in different committees that we have over the next couple of months and be in a position to start taking applications in about 60 to 90 days.
Okay. What is the reporting- What is the reporting requirement to the commission? I know you serve on there. I know we have staff on there, but we are committing, we're voting to commit monies to this from the commission. So what's the reporting? Or is there a reporting requirement, or will that just be done?
Well, the, depending on what type of reporting. Since these are American Rescue Plans, there are significant audits that have to be done and reports that have to be done and provided back through us, so we can report those to places that we're required to do that. So there's certainly a lot of checks and balances there. These are meetings that this board will be having, and we'll be happy to provide quarterly reports. We'll actually probably bi-yearly reports to the commission on the progress that we have. But of course, we'll be dotting every i, crossing every t with the federal funds that this, this board be in possession of. So there, there's a lot of requirements because these are funds coming out of there that we must do and a lot of hoops that we have to jump through.
And maybe the county manager's report, too. That may be a, you know, convenient way of getting information to us in a timely manner. I think all of us are concerned about it, and over these two years that we've served in this term, I know several occasions we've talked about the lack of affordable housing in this community. And I think all of us have had the experience of having constituents who were housed in a hotel somewhere in terrible conditions because there was no housing available, especially three and four-bedroom homes, where there are certain requirements that people have to meet, and the housing has to fit those requirements, bedrooms and all of that. Another problem that we're having in a lot of neighborhoods is there are people who are buying up property all over. They're coming in, doing the repairs. Charlotte, in our neighborhood, we've got a lot of that going on. People have died and their property is just out there. Somebody comes in and scoops it up. They fix it up, and then they jack the rent up so high until, these people are forever renters. They never can get far enough ahead to be able to afford the down payments and the other kinds of things for homeownership. And we know that homeownership is just so important in building a lot of positive things in families. So I support this because it's going to make a difference, and it's going to put a dent in some of this speculation, I think, that's going on in our communities, where we're fast becoming a town where everybody's having to rent because people are buying and they're renting, they're not selling the homes. So I salute those who put this together, those who've agreed to serve. I would like to get the regular reports, and if it can be included, that information on the progress being made, if it can be included where we know what's going on in exchange for our, our vote here today. I hope I've been added as a sponsor, and I think this is the kind of thing that we all, as commissioners who vote on every issue that comes through government, that we would want to have our names on. A fantastic housing initiative, and I look forward to the progress that's going to take place in providing affordable housing for many families. My last que, that was a statement, my last, my question is, who will do the work? Who will be doing the work on rehabbing or whatever? And that's my last one.
There'll be qualified local developers, and that'll be done contractually with this board. We've divided the committee up to a policies and procedures and an underwriting to monitor that, and how we're going to maintain the affordability of this is through our contracts that we have directly with the developers that will apply, applicants that may apply for this money. So that, that's what we'll be doing there. And you bring up a very good point, Commissioner Lucas. Thank you for that, as we have over 200 children living in extended stay hotels in Macon-Bibb County, and it's, it's not the, the best place to raise a child. Sometimes they're unsupervised in precarious situations, and it leads to other problems that we have there. And that is some of the things that this commission has been doing through the nuisance per se on some of these hotels, is of that very reason. There's program through the school system where they're helping those folks, they can't help pay rent, but in some situations, you have a single female paying about $1,200 a month in rent at extended hotels, and that's not providing any opportunities when the mom is away at work and the kids are out of school. A lot of times, you have three or four kids in one bedroom, and they don't have those same requirements that you have in the housing, and that's why they, they do that. They also get generally free internet and at least a breakfast there in the morning, and that's why they do that. But that's a very expensive proposition when that same funds could be used with some down payment assistance for a house. So I appreciate those comments. Commissioner Bronson?
Hey, I got a, thanks, sir. First and foremost, thank you for this program that you're putting together and taking that opportunity out to talk with us in regards to the program. Had a few questions, probably about four questions, if you can indulge me. First and foremost, on the, from an educational standpoint, will there be any educational programs that will be set up there to kind of show individuals that want to purchase a home, how to go about doing so up under this program? Is that an educational piece of this?
Yeah, we, we're going to be working together with Home First, who does an education, both advising them on how to take care of a home and the financial portion of that, and that will be part and parcel of the applications that they get for homeowners.
Okay. And then in regards to areas, right, are there any key areas that this program will probably focus in on? Is it, is it a deal where we are focusing in on Houston Avenue, East Macon, sides of towns? Is that, is that a piece that's involved in this directly?
There's a direct correlation, especially from the ARP funds. We have certain census tracts that are, are available for that. There's also a rubric that the board has discussed in general, that if you, these targeted areas, you get a better interest rate if you target these areas, and one of those areas is Houston Avenue.
Okay.
In conjunction with, with the project we have going on at Cliffview. So expect from Bruce, actually from Eisenhower Parkway through Bruce Elementary will be a target area, the initial area that they, they're going to consider.
Okay. I think Commissioner Lucas already kind of hinted toward this as far as a tracking program. How are we going to go about doing as far as tracking the success of the program itself? Is that, is that a means? Do we have a means of tracking? I know it's just getting started, but has that been thought about as far as how do we go about tracking this and/or to ensuring that that's presented to us as a commission to see where we are in the process?
Yeah, what, just like we talked about, it'll be in the county manager's report whenever the board provides the information to the county manager. It's going to probably take six to 12 months, as you can imagine, to get any type of results. We have already located 68 properties that are available to build. It's in our inventory, and we'll be happy to provide you a list of those at the appropriate time, working in conjunction with the land bank. Land bank is going to be leading the large part of this effort, because as you can imagine, they've had some properties, some lots that have been cleared of title and taxes that are available to build on, which help, help increase our tax base as well for having people have houses on this property.
Okay. Last question, I promise. So what is the plan? Say, for instance, if the, if the funds are not being used, like we're looking at this and we say, because $7.5 is a lot of money when you really look at it. In the event that these funds are not being used, is there a way for these funds to be put back into the bucket, so we can utilize those more directly to the community? Or is that, once we put this in, sign this into place, there's no more getting that money back?
Well, I can tell you, failure is not an option. We believe that we can engage these funds. Matter of fact, we have to engage these funds by 2026. We have a timeframe pursuant to American Rescue Plan guidelines. But certainly, we know that there's many needs already out there now. Because of the interest rate increase that we have, a lot of these developers can't get the money that they need to develop these homes, and we want to do this on a large scale. So I don't, I don't know that any money will be coming back. I trust that this board is a good, competent board, will be able to have that. We're going to make sure we market and advertise it to make sure that the right people get notified of the opportunities here, and we're going to begin the application process just as soon as we can.
Application process. So when we, when we talk about the application process for those, say, for instance, contractor-wise, what's the means of notifying them and/or to? Because I think me and you had a conversation in regards to contractors, ensuring that these guys are certified, they know the routine of it, they know how to go about applying for it. We want to make sure we give every opportunity for those that want to come in and assist in the building process, have that opportunity.
And that's why we have Sean Stafford on the board, who has a history of making sure that things like that happen. We want to make sure we're very inclusive in the process and that the application process dictates that. One of the things we want to do is going to market this and have it, eventually have an approved vendor list, as we have in other places for contractors that are local. And certainly, we're going to depend on Sean and his expertise, as well as Mike Austin and his expertise in the process. So I, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I think the word's going to get out very quickly that we have this type of money there, but we're not going to just let anybody come in that don't have the experience and don't have the capacity and don't have the know-how, because these are federal funds, and we want to make sure that we, we protect them in a way that we're supposed to protect them. But more importantly, we want to make sure it gets to the people that need it the best.
Okay. If, if possible, can they add on as a co-sponsor as well?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes, sir, thank you. Just a small question, really kind of following up on Commissioner Bronson, but how do we reach those people that are going to need these funds? How do we get that information out to them when we start doing this? Secondly, it sounds like you're focusing on some particular tracks. Are we also looking at the blighted property areas that we've taken down houses where we can rebuild? Is that going to be some focus, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Because those are, those are already in neighborhoods that need some help, too.
When I mentioned earlier, infill, that's what that means. The houses that we've taken down and properties, about 425 so far, with another 400 on the list. Some of the properties we're looking at, those, we're going to infill to some of those areas near school. As you remember, one of the targeted areas we had is around faith-based organizations, churches and schools, that we demolished houses that were not safe and burned out or had otherwise issues around children. So those are some of the same places that we're looking at, and those are some of the same inventory we have through the land bank around those areas. So that's going to be the target area initially.
Yeah, I just really want us to be able to reach the people that need this help, and I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet, but I, I hope it works.
Yeah.
Because it's a good plan.
We've got a, a great expertise on this board, and I, I know that they know how to get the word out. Several of them have a history of doing this already, and we know already through some referrals that people have been looking for this type of opportunity, and that's why we want to do it. So thank you for your, your information.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? At this time, I entertain a motion. Motion by Mayor Perchon Clark. We get a second. Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? And I'll take it, all the seven of you that are here today want to be added as co-sponsors. Okay. We'll put everybody here that's today for co-sponsors on there. We'll have a, this will go back before the board next week if it passes as well for a final. This time, we have a motion and second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Thank you very much. And that'll be on the consent agenda. Well, I thank each of you for being here today and taking time out of your busy schedules because I know it's important to you. You're not going to hurt our feelings if you need to leave early. We understand that you have other things to do. So at this time, if you'd like to depart, we go ahead and let you do that. Going to move on to item 4B, which is an ordinance to authorize a budget transfer from within the Information Technology Department budget from various line items to repairs and maintenance, software licenses, maintenance budget to amount of $44,000 to provide additional funds for radio tower maintenance services. As my motion, can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Lynn. Any questions concerning that item? See, no questions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item 5A is a contract for implementation of renewal, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting to perform lighting repair services at Bloomfield Park in an amount of $124,822 to be paid from the 2018 Spots Funds for Recreation Bloomfield Giliod Property Line Item and all other lawful purposes. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this item? Motion by Mayor Perchon Clark. We get a second. Second by Commissioner Jones. And this is for lights, some new lights, but also some lights that we have some damage out there at Bloomfield Recreation, including the wiring and other thefts that we had and vandalism out there. We have a motion and second. If there's no further questions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item B is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with SNK Professionals Limited Liability Company for the provision of services for Macon Circuit District Attorney's Rise Initiatives. As you remember, last time, we had a similar vote, and this is basically adding an additional company there, and we've already discussed that. So I get a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bronson. We get a second. Second by Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Lucas?
This, this program, I had the privilege of attending and participating on the program for the first graduation of students from this, this program. The superintendent of schools was the guest speaker, and it's tremendous. And we ought to support it.
Thank you. These are grant funds. Initially, about $750,000 was done. There's a, a large list of services that, that those that need can get those services, and she's implementing that program. So thank you for your support of that. We do have a motion and second. If there's no further questions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a debris monitoring service agreement with Thompson Consultant Services for debris monitoring services as as-needed basis for an average hourly rate of $38.68. Dr. Moff, would you mind stepping up and explaining that to us? Or, I'm sorry, we can let, I didn't see Spencer there, sorry. Identify yourself, sir, so we know who you are.
Spencer Hawkins. I'm the emergency management director for Macon-Bibb County.
Tell us what we're doing here today regarding this debris.
What we're doing, this is a debris monitoring contract, which we execute, we execute after disaster happens to, this company would work in conjunction with our debris remover contractor, which is the next thing on the agenda, to literally count the amount of debris and the quantity that we pick up, and we utilize that number for the FEMA reimbursement process. And so we execute this pre-contract so that we can have the contract ready to go, so I can make a phone call when the disaster happens, and within 24 hours, we got somebody ready to go versus going through a three-month procurement process while the debris's still laying on the ground.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Any questions for commissioners? Commissioner Lynn?
I, I read this, and I was trying to understand it. So they're on call and ready if we have a disaster come through and it requires debris removal.
Yes, this, Thompson is the monitoring company. FEMA requires two independent companies, one to pick up the debris and one to count the debris. This is the monitor, count the debris. It's a checks and balances process.
But they're on call. I mean, if that happens today, there'll be here tomorrow to, to...
Yes, that's built into the contract, and they know, and these companies work in this space all the time. It's usually about a 24-hour turnaround time. And then what we will do is most often, when we have a hurricane and we know that it may be coming our way, we will call them ahead of time, put them on notice, and we'll already have programs and processes in place prior to landfall.
Okay. And I know this goes to the next question, but there'll be debris removal on private property, too? Did I see that correctly?
Yeah, we will, we will work with the commission and the debris removal processes because the way that, and we discovered this during Hurricane Irma, is that even though that we do have some quote-unquote "private property," gated communities is what we're really talking about, we still handle all of their trash service and roadwork and things of that nature. So we work with FEMA to make sure that we are authorized to go on there so we can clear up their debris and we can get recouped those dollars.
So the monitoring service looks at that debris also?
Yes, they will look at all of the debris, depending on the disaster. For the most part, you'll see vegetative debris, trees, limbs, things like that. But if, for example, we had a tornado that came through a residential neighborhood, you would not only would have trees and debris, but you'd have construction debris, house you would not only would have trees and debris, but you'd have construction debris, house debris, white good debris and all of that is built into our debris management process that we, um, update and review every single year.
Okay. This is, this is a company we've never used before. They're right. Thompson is not.
Thompson is a new vendor for us, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hawkins, this is reimbursement right to make sure we get adequately reimbursed for the debris that we pick up as well or not?
Yes, um, the way it works is that, uh, standard, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split. So FEMA will pick up seventy-five percent of the cost and then, um, Macon Bibb County, or the local, the state and local match is the twenty-five percent. And usually that's split, ten percent is covered by the state and fifteen percent is covered by the locals. However, our agency has done a lot of extra work. So instead of a ten, fifteen split by the state and locals, we have a twelve point five split evenly. So we get more money back. And then we work, like I said, with FEMA, with the state to ensure that this is reimbursed. When we had this during Hurricane Irma, we got approximately ninety percent of our dollars back.
Thank you, sir. At this time, uh, we've asked questions. At this time, I entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Wynn, second by Commissioner Howell. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Titan Aviation LLC for the lease of a hangar at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport. Ms. Harris, you going to do that? Ms. Davis?
Good morning. I'm Senior Assistant County, or Assistant County Attorney Sarah Davis. I gave myself a permission. I'm sorry. Um, this is, uh, a lease for, with Titan Aviation. They've been a long-term renter out there and they just wanted to renew their lease under new terms. Um, it's just for hangar space and the space outside of that hangar. And it's going to be, uh, fifteen hundred dol-, fifteen hundred five dollars and fifteen cents a month.
Thank you.
It, it was fifteen cents.
Mr. Howell?
Yeah, I was looking at the contract. Um, are you sure about the square footage of that hangar?
We got that from the airport. So I didn't measure it, but the airport, that's what they put in there.
Okay.
I think it's modified from the previous term, but I, I do know they've been working on this for a while and it's probably an increase in, in the amount. So, uh, any other questions? At this time, I entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Wynn. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further questions? Hear no questions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a debris removal service that Mr. Hawkins spoke about just a moment ago. Uh, services as-needed basis with DRC Emergency Services at an average hourly rate of four hundred fifty-nine dollars and ten cents. Serious Environmental Service at an average monthly rate, I said that, hundred sixty-eight point twenty-one, oh, these are multiple companies, at an average hourly rate of six hundred nineteen point seven nine, DMJ Inc. at an average hourly rate of six hundred twenty-nine dollars and KDF Enterprises' average rate is two hundred eighty-seven point seven nine, Southern Disaster Services' average rate of one hundred seventy-four and TFR Enterprises, Inc. at an average hourly rate of six hundred sixty-one point seventy-two. First question, Mr. Hawkins, is why we have all these different amounts and numbers? Uh, and, uh, second, what is this authorized, uh, you to do?
So, um, the reason we have multiple companies is because we want to make sure that we get somebody to come in and do this debris work for us. And so the way it would work, when we went through our bid process, um, we rated each company based on project approach, experience, timeline, price, things of that nature and came up with a rating scale. And then what we will do is when the disaster either happens or if we know we're anticipating something happening, we will call, um, the first company on the list. Can you do this work? Here's what's going on and they'll give us a yea or nay. If they say yes, then great, then we start that process. They come in, they get ready and they start doing the debris removal process. If they say no, then we move to the next company on the list. If they say no, then we move to the next company on the list because this is so critically important. We have to have multiple backups in case the company cannot come. Um, we found this out and this happens a lot during disasters. Once again, look at the last few years of disasters. It's not been isolated to one community. You have communities from South Florida all the way up to the Outer Banks of North Carolina being hit and there's only so many companies that work in this space. And so we need to make sure, A, that we have the best companies that can work for our communities and B, we have a backup in case that company is already engaged in another, um, disaster situation. And so we'll go through and do all this. And this is also, this RFP and this procurement and the debris monitoring is per FEMA regulations because that's one of the biggest things for us to get that reimbursement. FEMA, um, is very particular that we follow our procurement guidelines to the T. And so we need to make sure that we're doing this properly ahead of time so that we're ready to go. And so when we go in and start the FEMA reimbursement process, there are no issues in that response.
Thank you for that information. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Can you put the fees back up on the screen, please? Uh, first of all, I, I, because of, uh, I respect Spencer's integrity and his great job he continues to do that I know he's on top of it as far as checking it out, as far as who's the best, who's available. It's, it's odd to me on the rates. It, it always strikes me with anything, an hourly rate of four fifty-nine, ten. It's just odd how they come up with these.
Well, the, the way, and this gets into the complicated FEMA debris removal process.
Okay.
Um, there is different costs for the type of debris. So for example, your standard vegetative debris. A limb falls down and we hire the company to come pull it and pick it up from the side of the road and put it in a truck. That's one cost. Then there's a separate cost for what they call a leaner or a leaning tree. So if it's leaning on the side of the road and you have to measure the tree, if it's six inches in diameter and twenty-four inches from the base, that's a separate cost. Then there's a different cost if there's a hazardous limb that's caught in the tree line that's hanging down that may fall. Then there's a different cost for, um, a hazardous stump based on the root ball size and how much it comes out. Then there's different costs for what they call white goods, which is your appliances, refrigerators. Then there's construction debris costs. And so what we do through the procurement process is, and this is something we have to show FEMA all of, we got to show your work. And so we show FEMA how we've procured this and the different costs for every individual type of debris. And then for a way for us to categorize it is we average that out so that we can have a good, um, matrix cost because that's part of our matrix. Like I said, it's, it's the price as a, as well as experience, project approach, timeline. Because we need to make sure that, yes, maybe we, we have companies that are saying, I'll do that tree for a dollar and I'll do this tree for five dollars, but they have no experience. They're three guys in a pickup truck with a chainsaw. That's not going to accommodate us. We need to make sure that we have the right company who has the experience in the space to make this happen. Because like I said, if you were here for Hurricane Irma, and I know everyone, everyone was, debris was our biggest, biggest issue that we had and it took us months to get it cleaned up and we want to make sure it's done right and done quickly and safely.
So, so following up tho- those prices, I, I can see what you're saying. So, and FEMA pays what amount, you said?
Uh, on average, seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, okay. So these are, and I think that's important, they're reputable companies and there's nobody looking over their shoulder to see what they're doing, but they've got the reputation and, and.
Yes, and, and that's where the checks and balances come in with the monitor where you have this company. And these are all reputable companies with, um, in the list that we have there have at a minimum ten years of experience in this space. They've done multiple disasters throughout the country, but also that's where the checks and balances are of the monitor. So the monitor will go in and while the company is loading the debris on the side of the road in the truck, you have somebody from this debris, from Thompson, if we use them, that company who's sitting there watching and saying, okay, that truck holds twenty cubic yards of debris. It's only half full, so that means that they have ten cubic yards of debris. And then they take that to the debris site and they unload it and all of the monitors calculations are what we utilize to calculate the debris costs that go back to FEMA. But we've got to make sure that that debris monitor is monitoring the different types, because there's, like I said, there's different costs for construction, white goods, vegetative, and we need to make sure that the debris remover understands that and knows that you can't mix the debris. So there's a whole process on how this works.
So on, I think Commissioner Wynn touched on it. So they're gonna, obviously public places, public roads, excuse me. They'll do right-ofways. They won't go into private yards. They'd have to have private contractors to do that, I guess, unless it, unless it originated from the right-ofway or.
What, what we will do and our, our plan is that, um, we will ask all of our citizens if they would like, if they have debris. The tree falls in their, on their property, which is their tree on their private property.
Right.
They chop it up and they put it in the, in the way that we state, you have to pick it up and they bring it to the right-ofway, we'll pick it up. That, and that is FEMA approved. That, that's not a problem. But what we can't do is we can't go on Joe Smith's.
Right.
Property to pick up the tree that fell in their yard. Now, if, for instance, if you have a tree that's on private property, but it falls in the public right-ofway, we can cut the tree at the property line, pick up what's in the public space and pick that up. We can't touch anything from the property line back.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do, Spencer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Wynn?
Yeah, just, just like Commissioner Jones says, appreciate all you do. You do a great job. You just did a great job in explaining this government googly goop on how you decide what to do here. So, so one little question is, when you have this occurrence, do you line up every one of these? Because they do different functions, it sounds like, and you're going to have somebody doing limbs, somebody doing big trees. Do you, how do you do that?
One, one company will handle all the different types of, that's part of our, our scope of work. As we say that to, to bid on this, you need to be able to handle vegetative debris, white good debris, construction debris. And what a lot of these companies do, it's not just them by themselves. They'll hire subcontractors. And for the most part, they hire, when we had Southern Debris Disaster Recovery work for us for Hurricane Irma, I'd say probably seventy percent of their, um, cleanup crews were local vendors who came in and they, but it's all authorized. They review everything that they do and they are certified to pick up this debris. And so it's one company. Imagine, so these, for the, uh, a big project like this, imagine these debris vendors almost as project managers. And they're going to make sure that they hire the right subs and use their company assets to pick up debris and pick up what needs to happen.
So the highest priced hourly, average hourly rate is the ones that can, they're the ones that can do everything, pick up all kinds of debris?
Um, it's not, not necessarily the, the highest price. It was, it was a four-part process. It was, it was based on price, based on, uh, experience, project approach and timeline. And so we rate each of those four categories in our procurement process had a, a weighted score. And so we scored them based on that and that is how we came to this determination of list of the, the vendors that we're going to do. And then we're going to, we, we have to redo this every single year per FEMA guidelines. We have to go through this procurement process every single year for our debris remover and our debris monitor so that we are making sure that we're getting the best price for our community. Because FEMA's covering seventy-five percent of it. They want to make sure we get the best price. So they're paying the best price and that we are, um, open to ensure that any new vendors that may come on the space, um, are, are, um, given an opportunity to bid on it and to ensure that we always include, uh, and we did on this, uh, bit, this procurement, we do all of them, um, minority, women-owned, veteran-owned, um, those, uh, those vendors as well.
Yeah, I didn't see a women-owned company being listed in there, but I don't know which ones are women. But I'm not going to beat a dead horse. You've done a great job at explaining that and handling it and you always do a good job. So we'll move on and I know you should do a good job picking the right people to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Commissioner Bronson?
Hey, uh, first and foremost, thank you on that end. Um, I get it, right, in regards to that deal. Um, doing Hurricane Katrina, Irma and then the Mother's Day, Mother's Day storm, I, I understand that concept. The question I like to ask though is, is when we start looking at these storms that are coming in, first question is, when does it start? When does the clock start, right, for these guys? And then when does it end? And then the other piece of it, what's the minimal damage that needs to be done in order for? In order for that to happen, right? It's kind of like you go to a car, get your car fixed and say, hey, the estimated timeframe is a hundred dollars an hour. We're estimating roughly five hours to get your car fixed when it really only takes one hour to get your car fixed. Um, no puns with anybody, but anyway, on that end, just what is the, what's the minimal, uh, damage that it, that it needs to be causing that in for us to call these guys in? And then when does the clock start and end on this? How do we track that piece of it?
Yeah, we, we track that piece very closely. The clock would start when they start work. Um, the clock, you know, when we're having these phone calls and conversations, they're not charging us for that.
Okay.
That's not how that works. The clock would start when they actually put boots on the ground and start actually making those, uh, making those decisions and setting things up and starting putting pieces in place on ground. And that would happen after the disaster hits.
Okay.
Um, depending on the situation, like I said, every disaster is absolutely unique. Even hurricane to hurricane is very, very different. Um, you know, we may pre-stage assets before that. We may not. It depends on the situation or what we're looking at. Um, we would make that determination in emergency management with our, um, with our debris management, emergency support function, which is handled and, um, headed up by Parks and Beautification. So it's a team effort between our two departments to make those determinations on what the, the first steps are to make that happen. But typically, the clock starts immediately after the disaster leaves and we are ready to start putting boots on the ground to start that debris removal process. And then, um, your next question was about, um.
Minimum damage.
The minimum damage. Once again, that's where we would work with our, uh, debris management, emergency support function. We would do what's called preliminary damage assessment immediately following the disaster to ensure that we have the right, the, the right information about what we're anticipating. And so we would get, uh, we have teams out in the field. Our code enforcement department, um, works with us as our preliminary damage assessment team that would get out there and survey the damage, see what's going on, um, so that we know what we're dealing with as far as cubic foot of debris, what types of debris did it, you know, is it all vegetative? Did, you know, we have a couple of tornado outbreaks that damaged homes and now we've got construction debris to deal with or something of that nature. And we would also utilize our fire stations. They help us do some preliminary damage assessment as well. So in conjunction with that preliminary damage assessment, seeing what we have, then we would understand, well, this is a small enough incident where, and, and can end conversation with, once again, Parks and Beautification as well as Public Works, who's part of our debris team, they would say, you know, we can handle this. We can, it might take us a couple of weeks, but we can knock this out. We can handle it versus there's no way. We need to get our contractors in, start cleaning this up. And that's a determination, that decision would, once that decision, um, comes to the forefront, that would be made between emergency management, our disaster, um, debris management team as well as, um, our county manager.
And, and last piece, and in regards to the assessments, and I'm probably, hope I'm not stepping out of line with this question on this end. In regards to the assessments, is there a way for the, either the commissioners as a whole or that particular district get a assessment, uh, report from you guys? I know the last time we came through, we had some power outage here and there and you would have constituents that would call and say, hey, uh, I think Sepp Clark, Commissioner Clark, went out to his constituents because he knew about, hey, there was a report that was going on, something happened in, in that particular area. Is there something, some way we can get a report that kind of shows that to help us, you know, basically bring some comfort to the constituents on what's taking place and notify them of things happening?
Yes, we utilize a, um, a, a cloud-based live, uh, damage assessment software that as our teams are in the field gathering this data, we're getting live input from what they're seeing and what, what damages they're seeing, whether it's vegetative, trees, houses, things like that. And so as that data comes in, um, we can synthesize it, put it all together. And yes, I can work, uh, directly with, uh, Dr. Moffett and get you, uh, uh, an appropriate report.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Thank you for all those, uh, conversations and, and you can tell Spencer lives for the days like this, so. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, for all those explanations. Um, commissioners, there's no further questions. At this time, we entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Bronson, second by Commissioner Jones. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a renewal amendment to the Radio Systems Maintenance Agreement with Williams Communications in amount of twenty-two thousand sixty-seven dollars and eighty-three cent per month over three years for a total contract price of eight hundred seventy-five thousand six hundred nine dollars and twenty-five cent to be paid from the Information Technology Department Budget Radio Systems Repairs and Maintenance. As my motion, can I get a second? Second by Commissioner Lucas. Any questions regarding that items? Hear no questions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Oppose, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item six A is fees for environmental health. A resolution to approve the proposed revisions to the scheduled fees for environmental health services as recommended by the Macon Bibb County Health Department. Commissioner Lucas, I believe this is what you were requesting the last couple of weeks. We got that information in. I see, uh, Mr. Smith here along with several people, uh, from maybe his department and others that are here. If you want to say anything on that, we'll hear from you this time.
Yes, uh, before we call on the, um, uh, director of Macon Bibb Health, Dr. Dr. Smith, you can start coming this way. Um, Commissioner Clark and I are, uh, proud to serve as members of the, uh, Macon Bibb Board of Health. And we have just been so pleased with not only the new facility. Uh, and I hope, I think we all had a chance to go and visit that new, uh, uh, facility. It's wonderful. But more than this, the staff, the folks who are working there and providing, uh, than this, the staff, the folks who are working there and providing service to the community, they're, they're just outstanding. And they offer these services while short-staffed. Always short-staffed because of salaries. And so Board of Health works to try and increase where we can and provide support. Board of Health also provides support to pedestrian safety, the Pedestrian Safety Review Board. Dr. Smith is going to explain to us item A here, 6A. They very seldom, one thing I've been real pleased with is they receive the funding from various sources. They utilize it, the funding very, very efficiently, providing services. And they don't ask for fee increases. So, and this one's been a long time coming. So we ask for the commissioner's consideration of the resolution to approve some proposed increases. Dr. Smith?
Okay. Good morning, everyone. In the attachments that you were provided by Ms. Ross, I added a memo on the front, which tried to highlight the work that we've looked at over the last eight months related to this fee increase. So as you can see, it began back in April of 2022 with initial presentation by Rick Kraft from our North Central Health District to look at these fees, which had not been reviewed since 2007. The next set of paragraphs on the front of that goes through the discussion that was had by our Board of Health at their monthly meetings. Input was provided by an environmental health manager, Felicia Pearson Powell, as well as backup from the deputy, Chandrika Webster, as well as Rick Kraft. An additional review was asked by the Board of Health members based on the initial, initial fee structure concept, which you will find in the end was the one that was not accepted. So part of that was a fee increase that looked at one fee across the board. What we have at the end of this eight-month study is one that asked for a 1.98% increase based on a three-year average of inflation. And that study went back from 2007 to 2022. As Ms. Lucas had, had indicated, we operate with nine environmental health staff. We average over 700 annually certified restaurants in this county. And we consider it a blessing that you don't hear about foodborne outbreaks in this county. We work very hard to make sure that that doesn't happen. Part of the reason we're bringing this forward is because the model for how restaurants are now operating has, has changed. Primarily, it was set on just the size of the restaurant. Now, what we're asking to do is we want to look at the number of seats. We want to look at the number of employees. We also want to look at the number of meals served. So in this packet, you have what the original proposal was. Toward the end of packet, you also have an example of where, we used an example of if they had this many employees, this many meals served, this many seats, this is what that, that fee would be. And what we're proposing going forward is that every three years, we would look at this so we don't have that 15-year gap in assessing our environmental fee structure.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any additional questions for commissioners? Commissioner Lucas?
Yeah, if Dr. Smith could introduce the other staff people who are here and tell what they do, and then Commissioner Clark might have.
Ask them to stand. Felicia, will you stand? Pearson Powell is our environmental health manager for Macon Biv County. Chandrika Webster serves as the deputy role and primarily covers our restaurant side of the house. And Rick Kraft works with the North Central Health District as our development and training officer.
Thank you. May I approach him, Carter?
Yeah, thank y'all for being here. Dr. Smith, thank you for all you do. I just want to reiterate what Dr. Smith said about the, how long it's been since this fee was assessed and, and the way that the metrics have changed for inspections of restaurants. That's, and, and the fact that the fee would be a, an adjustment for inflation. That's a, it's a pretty standard increase, but it's gonna go a long way for the environmental services in the county. And I really appreciate y'all putting it together and vetting this. I know that any request like this is not done lightly. So I really appreciate the due diligence y'all put into it. And I really appreciate all y'all do for the county. So with that, I think we, we need a motion. I'll, I'll make that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Carter. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Lucas. If there's no further questions, I'll call for a vote. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to say, too, that we did have a public hearing. You had a hearing of all of the folks affected.
Yes, that was one of the things that's listed in the initial memo that was, in following the process that the Board of Health uses, once they had their preliminary discussions, they asked for environmental health to set up a public hearing. A one-month notice was put out for that public hearing. We set that hearing for September, stayed approximately two hours, did not have any one that presented for that.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that. It's important to know that there's some opportunity to reach out to folks so they can be heard on there. And that opportunity has, has came and went, and we got your proposal today. So this time, we do have a motion as second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Thank you for being here today. Commissioners, we do have, we do not have a need to go into executive session today. So is there no need to go into executive session? If there's no further business that brings us before today, we'll see you next Tuesday for pre-commission and commission to ratify all these wonderful things that we did today. Thank you very much.